Welcome, everybody. Today is Wednesday, July 16th. This is Binghamton City Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Medvedevsky.
Present.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Present.
Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes, please?
I'll make the motion.
I have an emotion with a second.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none or all in favor?
Aye.
Reports from committees and appointments. Councilmember Kavanaugh, would you like to report on BLDC, please?
Yes, BLDC had a special meeting this past Monday because several procurement contracts for Boskovs have made their way through the procurement process and the evaluation process by LaChase, who was retained as a consultant. This is kind of the major mechanical stuff for HVAC. So there was a, the actual heating and cooling units, the installation of those units, and the electrical hookups for all those units, totaling just under half a million dollars of the 10 million that was allocated by the state. So expect to hear more of these coming in similar-sized chunks. But this was obviously a first important step.
And Councilmember Kavanaugh, I'm going to hand it back to you to report on COD.
I don't have any COD report.
Okay, then we'll move on. So, public comment. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk at cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. Would anybody like to come down and speak a public comment? Wait till you get to the microphone and please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton. To the microphone.
Can I? Now you can hear me. Okay. Ms. Triffa Gasdegrace, I live at 61 Kennelworth Road in Binghamton. I the Bingham School. For the Bingham. The director, I'm a liaison. I teach courses over there. Thank you. The reason I'm here tonight is we just sold our house in Florida and we're back here to live full-time. And I'm concerned that some of our neighbors mow their lawn with those lawnmowers, the riding ones, and they blow lawn clippings out into the street. Now, you might think that's a miniscule thing, but I'm talking the middle of the street. So that you see kids that are on scooters now, people that are out walking. If it's raining, it becomes slippery. It's not cleaned up immediately so that it stagnates. It smells. I have contacted Rebecca, my councilperson. I don't think we've come to any resolution at this point. I've also talked to Carla Murray, who's a former student of mine, and Kenya Middleton. I met at Dick's party, and Robert Kavanaugh was a former student of mine. So I don't know where to go or what to do if people are not responsive to taxpayers' questions. Is there a code in Binghamton? I know that when I shovel my sidewalk, I can't push snow out into the road. I know that when I do leaves, I can't push leaves out into the road. I called COD and COD said there was nothing that they could do. Okay, so what can we do? I am a lifelong resident of the Binghamton schools. I've lived here my entire life and I'm probably twice your age. So what can we do about that? That's my comment. I'm very respectful, but it does upset me when people don't get back to me and follow through on what they say they're going to do. So that's my public comment. I'm asking you to look into that. I also met with Jared Cram. He was at another party that I was at, and he's also going to look into it. But I would respectfully ask you if you could do that and get back to me. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. It's good to see you all. You're always doing a great job. Mr. Dundon, are you related to the Dundons who went to North High School?
Yes, and you were actually my principal when I grew up.
I thought so. I thought so. It's good to see you all. You're doing a great job, really. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Very welcome.
Do we have any public comments that need to be read into the record? Okay, we will move on to first-read legislation. This is introductory ordinance 25-40, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is introductory ordinance, oh wait. Actually, I'm just going to introduce it. Ordinance 2540, an ordinance to authorize an agreement with Siemens Industry.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion, please.
So the, for context, a version of this was introduced earlier this year as RL 2545 by the mayor's office during the February 10th work session with a request to expedite, despite having given council barely the weekend to review the supplemental material. I believe it was initially President Dundon and Councilmember Kavanaugh who flagged several operations and budget concerns, as did other members, so it was not moved forward. And a second version of the ordinance was reintroduced at the June 2nd work session under RL 25100 in planning.
So I guess I'll start with my comments. I have not been a fan of the Siemens contract the first time around, and I'm still not sold on it the second time around. Looking over the CNES company's third-party study that the city paid for, the two biggest cost savings of 26% energy savings and then 10% energy savings fall under programmable thermostat installation and lighting upgrade to LED, which I know from talking to our maintenance people that we could do in-house. When it comes to the solar film, Siemens did say on the floor at the last work session they were at that they would put the solar film on windows that they are recommending to change out in five years. So we're going to put eight, give me one second, 8,513 square feet of solar film for only $2,838 of cost savings. So when the two biggest cost savings of this energy bill we can do in-house, I still don't like locking us into a lease payment schedule of 20 years for $1.4 million. So I am still not a fan of this contract and I will still be voting no. Anyone else?
There are other alternatives, right? So, so to this contract. Right? You're saying that some of the work can be done.
I believe the biggest cost savings could be done in-house. You could literally bid out the fire stations individually and keep that money here locally and hire local contractors, potentially through an open bid process instead of just giving this to one contract, to one developer slash contractor to do all of this. And then on top of the fire stations, instead of investing the money for 8,000-plus square feet of solar film, why not invest the money to change out the windows in three years instead of five years? I just feel like this is throwing too much money into something that the cost savings, most of it can be done in-house to be, to not lock our children into a contract they have to pay for.
Did we at one point consider like a bidding process? I remember having that conversation.
This contract went out to bid. This, this, this.
This new.
No, no, no. The original contract went out to bid. There were, I believe, five responses to the bid. And Siemens was selected as the lowest bidder.
But since then?
Councilmember Kevin, off the top of your head, do you know when the contract that went out to bid?
Off the top of my head, no, but last bomb, do you know off the top of your head?
I want to say it was around several years ago.
I believe it was 2023, if I remember correctly, but.
I'm getting nods from our director of planning who was involved with the bidding. So somewhere around there is when the bid went out to basically do an analysis of what could be done at the city. Siemens was the low bidder that came back. They did the analysis of, you know, where the city could see cost savings on these different things. And that's kind of what preclude, led to this contract was Siemens did all that work in terms of figuring out what different issues were. And so had familiarity with what needed to be done at the city to produce those different cost savings and energy savings.
Thank you, Corp Counsel.
So I would I would frame this contract as some of the contract the city was in a couple of decades ago when everything went from normal, large fluorescent lights, T12s and incandescent bulbs, to what we have mostly now T8 fluorescents and compact fluorescents. This is repeating that play, going from fluorescent lights to LEDs and capturing the cost savings that represent, that are represented by those. Could some of that work be done in-house? Yes. Do we have the capacity constantly? No, because people are busy doing what they normally do. I think this is the chance to capture the benefits as quickly as possible. As far as paying, you know, sticking folks with a bill, the alternative is that we pay for this or bond for this over ti, you know, bond and pay for it through a bond instead of a lease agreement, which is against our borrowing limit and is going to be a more, a more piecemeal solution without the guaranteed savings in this contract. Now, I'm to get skeptical about those things, but there is, there is a performance guarantee in the contract. The other, the other big component of this is the electric vehicle chargers, which we have both subsidies for and some energy tax credit programs, funds to go towards. If we don't do it this way and do it now, we probably won't get that infrastructure built out through an alternative funding source. It's, it's an expense and it's expensive, has to be paid over time, but I think it's a worthwhile undertaking. We took some time. We analyzed, you know, the parameters of the study, concerns that were raised by various departments and councilmembers as far as, are we replacing things that were already replaced? No, they went fixture by fixture. We looked at some of the heating, heating blocks for, for generators and whether they were really needed or not, it was, or were solutions, you know, available. The, the newish technology of the pinpoint ionization filters, we decided we don't want to take that leap. And if there's, you know, possible maintenance. So we've pared it back to the core of fixture replacements, which we have experience with. Again, a couple of decades ago when we went to small fluorescent lighting and within our entire streetlight program in the city of Binghamton, both of which the original contract paid out and our streetlight program is on target. So I think this is, this is just a good step, you know, taking that same similar step with the added bonus of the electric vehicle chargers. I, so I respectfully disagree with, with Council President Dundon. I think this is a good move of the city and why I put time and effort into trying to work with folks as far as trimming it down to something that's acceptable and a good fiscal move.
Councilmember. I'm beginning of your statement. You said that it's put in, go towards our debt limit or bonding, but my understanding is like after we entered this lease, that we would bond for it for a better interest rate? And I believe that was discussed in one of our meetings, so.
So the plan right now is to stick with the lease. If, if it becomes in a couple of years' time, if it's, makes a lot of fiscal sense to move to a ban and bond on it, we can do that. But it would be, okay, this is a way to save money and our, and our debt load is looking good enough to do that. But this is sort of preserving optionality.
When we previously had discussions about this, I reached out to a number of cities that had done these types of upgrades more recently than Binghamton. And one of the, I can't remember if it was the comptroller or the deputy mayor at this point, because we're going back so many months in my notes. But, you know, I brought up the, well, can't we just do the lights in-house? And they said, you know, we really want our city employees doing things that are public-facing and helping constituents. And so this is a way that self-paying to deal with kind of the in-house stuff and keep our employees out there serving constituents. I don't know if Dundon's giving me a look.
Well, the maintenance guy isn't here. Nobody sees as public-facing and that's who would be doing primarily all that work. And I did talk to a bunch of municipalities myself, and the thing I find interesting is right now in Rensselaer County, Siemens is a part of an investigation with the county executive for over $75 million of money laundering through energy savings agreements. And just having something like that that's out there in the public that's being investigated by the FBI, that just makes me want to stick with my gut instinct of, I don't like any, any part of this whatsoever.
I also looked into the Rensselaer County situation. And there, again, their contracts with Siemens are highly complicated. They are doing a lot of energy production issues, solar, solar installation issues and things that are more complicated, had a wide variety of overruns and just a totally different beast than what we're dealing with. I think we're dealing with something that is very similar to what we have dealt with before again, in, in the case of the street lighting program and the previous energy efficiency program. And I, you know, Siemens remains a large national company that is international company that's interfacing with literally hundreds of municipalities. So I I don't want to, you know, I'm not here defending Rensselaer or Siemens overall, but, you know, that particular case. But I think in our instant case, it's you know, again, sensible.
I can add to that. So I spoke with the Rensselaer County District Attorney, or the Rensselaer County Attorney. I'm sorry, let me say, state that correctly. And in talking to him, he told me that the county executive for Rensselaer County wouldn't do business with Siemens until his second term. And by the time he was into his third term, they were granting upwards of $70 million contracts. He wouldn't give me any information on why he refused the first term. But to me, it just seems, why did all of a sudden you change your mind and then you're just signing blank checks to a company for different energy things? So I, I don't know. I, I wish I could get more information on that, obviously, be it, being an ongoing investigation. You can only read news articles. But when I did ask for Siemens to give me somebody to contact, they gave me the Rensselaer County Attorney, not anybody in their DPW or any of their county engineers. I thought that was weird.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Madam Clerk?
Hang on, hang on. No, I'm not done. Thank you. The I think moving towards more efficient lighting makes a lot of sense, making sure that we have sensors so that our, our heating things aren't operating when they shouldn't be. I do, I do have a hesitation of getting in, taking, borrowing large sums of money to make this all achievable. I wish there was like another alternative, honestly, at this point, but yeah, just I don't know. Feel like I'm, I've gone on both sides of this and now I'm just back stuck in the middle.
And I I echo that sentiment, right? Because I, I'm also concerned about the large sum of money. And we need to move forward with these projects in thinking of the energy efficiency. And so and I know initially when we have talked previously, right? I think I was leaning towards moving forward with this, but then also now hearing additional like concerns. I feel like similar to you. I'm, I'm wondering what other options might be available in wanting to consider those. So I don't know.
And I would like to add to the record. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. And I just wanted to add, since this was bid in 2023, it does not fall under the lowest responsible bidder law. So we don't have any of the protections or the sanctions from the lowest responsible bidder law with this either. I have nothing more to discuss on this. Does anyone else? So with this being bid in 2023 and our lowest responsible bidder law not taking effect to August of 2024, we do not have any of those protections with this contract.
You help me understand what those protections would include. I'm not.
So with the lowest responsible bidder law, we can sanction a contractor or developer to where if they're doing shoddy work, we can recoup some of the money. We can throw them off the job. We have our own sanctions outside of the Department of Labor, which we never had prior till the middle of last year. With this being bid with the previous council, this does not fall on, fall under that law in any way, shape or form, unless Corp Counsel would like to correct me.
So this wasn't bid under the city's new lowest responsible bidder law, but the city did have bidding requirements that while they weren't as stringent as it's in place now, there were and still are protections in place for these contracts. So it's not like this was bid with, you know, zero protections. It's just this not as many or as strong a teeth then as there were now.
That the city's policy or did it have to follow the state open bid policy?
Well, and that kind of goes where there's multiple pieces to public bidding where, you know, the city has its own requirements in place, but there's also the backstop of there being the New York State requirements under GML.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just to speak to the efficiency again, it's, this is essentially money we're either going to pay to NISIG or pay to Siemens with some savings at the end. And I forgot to talk about the windows. We really better you know, cross our fingers and hold our breath that we don't have to try, we're not going to undertake trying to replace city hall windows. The, they are absolute beasts. I do not see us replacing them in the next three years, five years or 10 years, given the cost of the windows. It is incredibly scary how expensive they are. They were, I don't know why I even know this. A unique design that causes them to, you can actually turn them, most of them in to clean them from the inside, but that has led them to be rather drafty. And there's no good solution and there's no equivalent, like manufactured replacement now. And then when you get to windows that are not like that, like ones around the, the mayor's office that are the full-length ones, those are heinously large and expensive to replace. It's, it will be a significant financial challenge to even contemplate replacing them. So getting a little more efficiency out of the ones we have with solar wrap is, again, I think, a good idea.
I, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just thought about something. I do understand like all those things that we need to do, but what's the urgency of it now? If everyone is not okay with it and everyone has certain parts that they don't feel comfortable with, what is the urgency for it to be done today?
Well, the urgency, so I mean, this process was started two years ago. So we went through the process. We went through the bid process. We did the, the evaluation of every single fixture in the, all of these buildings. So I don't know what the point of repeating that process would be. And we have spent a couple of months now talking about all the minutia of it. And the urgency for now, now, because I mean, we don't have lights falling off of the walls and stuff. The urgency now is, I think, the electrical, the electric charging component, which is is becoming more and more time-sensitive. The, the funds that were allocated for those are diminishing and are not going to get you know, refilled by the federal government. And we have the money from the energy credit programs that has to go to a renewable, or an energy efficiency project. So if we don't have this, we don't have that. We don't have a project anymore and we will, I don't know, Dr. Burling, how is likely will we not, will we lose those funds? How long do we have to use those? Okay. The, the NISIG, yes.
I understand that. I, I just, I just feel like what everyone's saying is very valid. I just feel like if everyone is not comfortable on it, I don't think it should pass if everyone's not comfortable on it.
Well, we're having a difference of policy opinion, but I don't know what the value of restarting the whole process would be.
Okay.
So Siemens is so if you want to rebid it, you might get a different bidder, but I mean, it's the whole process again. So we'll be having this discussion in a year or year and a half, but probably without electric vehicle chargers. I don't I, I don't, I don't see the advantage of taking a piecemeal approach of trying to do every little bit in-house. I don't see the value of ignoring what remaining federal subsidies there are for electric vehicle charging. I, I just you know, and other companies may not even have their reasons Siemens has, the leasing department they have, other companies may not even have that as an option to give us this financing component, these, this, these financing options.
So my question is that their financing options will still be available, but then restarting the process with that give us an opportunity to be able to assess what other options where folks are coming in. And then I guess my other question slash thought is that if this process did start over, then what would be the barrier to whatever could be done in-house actually happening? Like is there is, has there been, I don't know, like, will there be a barrier to that, right? So I hear the comment of wanting employees to be outward facing. However, like, how do we assess if there if there's capacity to be able to, if we start over, pull out what can be done in-house? And in my mind, unless I'm mistaken, because I am pretty new, the benefits of that would be like savings. Right? So I, I'm curious just to hear feedback from council. That's kind of where my head is. At, and I am open to hearing other thoughts. I mean, I'm like dead in the middle right now.
I haven't heard anyone arguing that everyone is underworked in the city and overstaffed and people are just sticking their feet up. I don't know if anyone else has heard that there's people just kicking around, milling around, doing nothing, waiting to change light bulbs.
You repeat that, you said.
I'm saying, I personally have not heard in my time in City Hall that there's lots of additional staffing that is just sitting around doing nothing that could take on an additional huge project. But I, I'm, I'm open to hearing anyone else hearing an alternative reality to that, you know, or a different perspective or.
And I wouldn't know, right? Because then that may be anecdotal. So is there any way that we could get an accurate kind of assessment of capacity? Like, how could that happen? Because if there's no capacity, then, then that kind of changes things a little bit, right? But then if there is, and I think that we are not in a position to be able to make that determination on our own in this moment. So is there any way we could get an accurate reflection of that?
I mean, the mayor's in the building, I'm sure he can come down and tell you that there's not more capacity in maintenance or DPW to do extra stuff. I mean, but and you're not addressing the fact that there's still a capital component that would have to appear with money from somewhere for all of the actual equipment and the project management resources. And you still don't have, if we do it in-house, you do not have the performance guarantee that Siemens is offering. I mean, they are guaranteeing that we are saving a certain amount of money over the course of the contract. So we lose all of that if we try and do it in-house. And I'm all generally for doing what we can in-house, but this is a, I, you know, I think it needs to be looked at as, as one, one major project and not fifty small projects.
Well, from my perspective, I'd rather see union local people work on it than out of the area people. And I am not comfortable with signing a, voting on a contract that literally my grandchildren could potentially pay off, seeing that the payment schedule doesn't end till 2045. And we don't even pay more in principal than interest until 2033. So that's just not something I'm going to do to the next generation.
I mean, we, that's, we've that's how we do municipal budgeting. We budget and pay for things over the lifetime of those things, generally speaking. That's what we, and we follow state guidelines in doing that. You know, we, we, we pay down fire stations over a thirty or forty year period. We pay for apparatus over a five or 10 year period. We, you know, and we're doing the same thing with the useful life of these things.
Which are normally through bonding and banding, not just a leasing, a lease agreement through a single company.
But this is the, this is the fiscal vehicle that makes most sense at this time. And if it changes to being a bond in a couple of years, then we can pursue that. We fiscal advisors did look into it and, you know, their, their proposal was not, you know, not compelling at this, at this time, so.
Anyone else?
Obviously, I'm hopeful to get EV charging in the city. And I think, you know, I'm still hopeful that, that EV charging will grow in need and that people will want to have access and we will be able to provide it. But I do think this seems to be, at least for the foreseeable future, the last last attempt to get that.
Anyone else?
I think the, the savings guarantee is I don't know, maybe this is a court council. Is that, so this is a two million dollar lease, over two million dollar lease. Are we guaranteed to save?
So the way.
If, if it doesn't, if it somehow doesn't pencil out that we, the calculations are not.
So the way that this is supposed to work is that the way it's supposed to work is they do the work and the cost savings that we see over the lifetime of the improvements that are made offsets what we pay on the lease. It's a guarantee. As with everything, is it possible that those guarantees couldn't line up or the guarantee might not be fully fulfilled? Sure. I mean, the seaman says like, look, you know, if, you know, your staff damages, the improvements we make, we can't hold, you can't hold this to our guarantee. So there are provisions that sort of offset that guarantee, but a lot of it is based off of what does the city do to those improvements? They maintain what's been done and what's been updated? Or they have to do with, you know, we get a hailstorm that knocks out half the windows to the building. Siemens isn't going to guarantee that the film they put on is going to keep up its energy efficiency. There's offsets in terms of having warranties for some of these improvements that are made that then get passed on to the city. But there's a guarantee. There's potential things that offset those guarantee, but a lot of that is either in the city's control or it's outside of everyone's control. I mean, if we have something that happens that damages the windows, that, that's kind of going to happen and affect everyone. Similarly, if the city's not maintaining, you know, the improvements that have been made, that's something we control in terms of whether we maintain those and make sure they stay in good repair.
So basically, literally the same maintenance crew I'm arguing could do the lights and programmable thermostats, will still have to maintain all this equipment and all these updates to keep that supposed, if it works supposedly, the guaranteed savings. Okay.
The insurance in a storm with, with that, does the upgrades, would they then be included in our insurance policy? Would they be, things be able to be replaced?
So.
Be hailstorms in it? Hailstorm scenario?
Largely, the city is self insured, so you know, we're the ones that sort of backstop the costs for that.
So corp counsel, basically what you're saying in theory is if anything changed in the maintenance or the administration or anybody who's going to be the representative for the city on this changes and we fall by the wayside and keep it up in maintenance, that the guaranteed savings is pretty much out the window.
It's not totally out the window, but it changes, right? Chances are you wouldn't have the city completely abandon maintenance across every one of the improvements. The, the most likely scenario is you have a single improvement that doesn't get maintained and that affects what that guarantee is, but doesn't wipe out the entire guarantee. So it's like a change in administration shouldn't affect this. A lot of this should be maintained within you know, DPW and maintenance in terms of keeping up with a lot of this stuff. And part of what we discussed with Siemens was making sure that we had sort of a warm handoff in terms of here's what needs to be done. And obviously the city needs to make sure that, you know, it's keeping track of all that stuff. You know, there's sort of an internal city piece of, hey, we need to keep logs that we're doing this maintenance. Here's what we're doing. Here's when we did it.
Seeing that we actually lost our account to have our meeting in the middle of a meeting to be publicized because somebody forgot, I can't say I have a lot of faith in something not getting missed in the maintenance. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, it's, so we're, we're guaranteed savings, but that savings is just going to be to pay off the lease. So it's not that.
There's a small net positive.
And climate change is real.
Does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, do a roll call.
Councilmember Rathmel?
No.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
No.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Council President Dundon?
No.
Thank you. That is two, five.
Moving on to introductory ordinance 25-47, considered in employees, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Murray.
You, President Dundon, I would like to make a motion to adopt or ordinance 2547. It is an ordinance to amend the 2025 water sewer budget for responsibility adjustment for the acting water sewer superintendent.
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion, please.
So this is for additional work expenses due to adjustments in responsibility due to the absence of a water sewer superintendent. I think it's pretty straightforward. So I don't know if folks have questions or concerns at this point.
Anyone else have anything to add to the discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you to seven zero.
Next is introductory ordinance 25-48, considered in finance, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-48, ordinance 2548, water sewer budget for vehicle repairs.
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion, please.
This is, as we talked about at the work session, this is for repair to the, the sewer vac truck. It's about a it's a critical piece of equipment. It's due for repair, not replacement, fortunately. And this is all transfers within the sewer fund. Off of, in fact, we're paying for it with interest from money we got from the sewer settlement. So it's not too bad.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you to seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R2425-44, considered in municipal and public affairs, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 25-44, a resolution to support the application of Ross Park Zoo interpretive, interpretive center complex.
Second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion, please.
So yes, this is actually really exciting. Ross Park Zoo applied for a grant. It's a historical preservation, so OPRHP. So basically, this grant, I think they, they said they applied for it before, but they didn't get it and they were the only people, only people applying for it now. So basically, this will help with the repairs that they really need at the zoo. And they have to get our approval before they apply for the grant. So they need it as soon as possible. That's it.
Anyone else have anything to add to the discussion?
Hearing none. No, I, so they were, they were, they're applying for a couple of different things. One was OPR and the other one was, I think, Susquehanna.
Yeah, they, I think they needed Susquehanna to approve their application or support letter. And that's the one where they said there was no, no one else applying for it.
Right, I just.
So they'll get the endorsement to apply for the grant.
Right, I just, do we need to mention Susquehanna Heritage Trails or whatever anywhere in here? Or is the same letter going to be okay for both? We don't know.
I thought when they, I thought when they applied, it was just for that part. I don't remember that other piece in there.
I don't, I don't, I didn't think that there was a role for us in the piece with this. I think they are coming to us to get our letter and they're going to the Susquehanna
Okay.
to get their letter. Those letters combined will be sent in for this grant. It's the way I interpreted it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're giving them what they need.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you to seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R25-45, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmel.
Thank you, Council President Dundon. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2545, a resolution to authorize New York State DEC urban and community forestry grant in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion.
This is exactly what it sounds. The grant was awarded following an application process and work that had previously been done with the Shade Tree Commission. There was some discussion during the work session regarding the hope that the Shade Tree Commission can continue to be involved in this and similar conversations and application discussions. But the funding has already been awarded. This would authorize its acceptance.
Anyone want to add anything to the discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you to seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R25-46, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmel.
Thank you again. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2546, a resolution to authorize New York State DEC urban and community forestry grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Have a motion, have an emotion and a second discussion, please.
So same comments as resolution 2545. This would authorize the acceptance of a grant that was awarded following planning discussions and an application process.
Anyone have anything they would like to add? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is communications from council. We're actually going to do it in numerical order tonight, so I will start with Councilmember Murray.
President Dundon, so I just want to encourage first world residents to submit applications for the local downtown revitalization project with that ten point one million dollars aimed to revitalize and invest into the Clinton Street area and encourage them to go on the website to get additional information. There is a meeting this month. That information is posted on the website in addition to meeting minutes. And I just also want to share that there is a lot of support being offered with the application process.
that there is a lot of support being offered with the application process. It's intentionally designed to be very simple and not a barrier to folks who are interested in submitting an application and just encouraging folks to reach out to me, the city of Binghamton. There's lots of information on the website. You got some
A question. Do you know how many applications have been received? Has that been shared with you at all?
Says of, I'm reviewing them. We actually did a, um, a walking, uh, tour today prior to this meeting, um, stopping into local businesses, reminding them about the application, encouraging them to submit application, reassuring them that the process is not going to be too stressful and that the city is willing to work with them and offer support. So I can provide some additional updates once, um, we start to get those applications in. But at this time, I don't have that information.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton?
Um, yeah, so today I, my daughter, she just started her first job at Summer Fund, so I wanted to go over to Saint Mary's and peek at the little people, to peek on her too, but to peek at the little people. So I had a, a moment to go inside of their classroom. Think it's like three to five years old and there's about thirty kids. They were having a dance party. And I got to see some more of the upgrades at Saint Mary's. Very excited, really good, um, programming and I'm excited for the future of what's going to happen in Binghamton. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
I'm good, thanks.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
No communications tonight.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
Um, continuing to document and contact our, uh, acting commissioner of D P W with all the potholes in the district, um, finding some juicy ones in, uh, far flung places in Southside East. Um, and I am, uh, I have a meeting coming up with the food council to continue working on, uh, food access.
Thank you mu- so much, Councilmember Medavetsky. Councilmember Rathmo?
Uh, so just on behalf of the planning committee, I do want to report that planning committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon at two P M to discuss the, uh, resolution twenty-five one seventeen, uh, to adjust our budget for Binghamton Plaza escrow. Uh, so community members who have been following along regarding the purchase offer and, um, response as well as community feedback on the Binghamton Plaza purchase. Uh, feel free to follow along on our YouTube. Uh, I want to also I guess I'll say, kind of think, I've been working closely with the, um, director of parks. The, as all of you know, and I think many in the community know, Webster Street Park was, um, awarded C D B G funding to upgrade the basketball court on site. Um, and I've had several opportunities to chat with uh, a bunch of the guys that play on the court, talk to them about not just the repaving, but lighting and, um, switching the rims out and why some of those additional upgrades make sense. Um, so I've been assured by the parks director that those will be, uh, taken into account. Um, and, and represented as they move forward with planning. And then I think uh, what I, we did just experience this time on the west side, I believe, another sh- a round of, um, water termination notices going out and shut offs happening when property owners fail to pay the water bill. So if you are a tenant, um, really anywhere in the city, but certainly on uh, the west side with the most recent shut offs, if you're a tenant and you do not currently have water, you think it's likely because the owner of the building did not pay the bill, a reminder that you can contact Family Enrichment Network, uh, Jason Goldsman directly at six oh seven, seven two three, eight three one three, extension eight three four. So you don't have to, uh, indoor not having water as a result of your landlord's non-payment. I think that does it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rathmo. So, next Wednesday, July twenty-third at Fairview Park from five to seven, I will be doing a meet and greet. So any resident who lives on the east side or District Seven for that matter, please come on out and let's, uh, chat a little bit. You could tell me your concerns for the east side and for the district. Um, I have nothing else to communicate other than that, so I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
The motion?
In a second.